All the Department of Public Works here. Everybody stand for the question, Regent.
The question, Regent, to the United States of America, and to the Republic, for what it stands, one nation, a better God, and your visible liberty, your justice, our all.
Good morning, everyone. We have a guest here today, Mike Arthur from DOT. Would you like to come up, Mike? Mike is asked to address the board today about a shared service contract. I'll let you explain it to us, Mike. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Good morning, Supervisors and guests. Last week, our Regional Director, Sam Zalas, sent out a letter to the Town Supervisors offering a shared service agreement between DOT and the municipalities. This is being done statewide and it's going out from the Regional Directors to all the Town Supervisors. It's an agreement that supplements the existing county municipal miscellaneous agreement where in that agreement DOT can reimburse the municipalities for snow and ice assistance. This agreement gives us, DOT, a mechanism to assist the municipalities and also for non-snow and ice events. Some of you have already signed this agreement and have sent it back. I just wanted to show up today and get in touch with all of you and see if anyone has any questions on it. I think you've all seen it, but we think it's a good thing. It gives, you know, it gives us a chance to help the municipalities without any, you know, we always worked together in the past, but we haven't had an agreement in place. It's just been a handshake. We're out on the road together and they wanted to have some kind of an informal agreement. This is $10,000 per event is what they put on it. I assume it could go higher than that, but there would be some talk involved. But I just wanted to see if anyone has any questions on it. They asked that I get a response from the towns by next week, if possible. The way they set it up, it's just a one-page, the town signs it, the Highway Superintendent signs it, I sign it, and my boss, who is the Regional Director of Operations, Mike Johnson, signs it. And once it gets signed, I'll mail a copy back to the towns and we'll go from there. But with that, any questions? Will we?
Mike, you know, I think that it's a wonderful idea and it's probably a no-brainer, but I won't have a board meeting until sometime in January. I think that I would want to have a discussion at least with my other board members and maybe other towns might feel the same way. So it's hard to tell you I can get you this by next week.
Yeah, and what they asked is that I just get, you know, they want an acknowledgement that you've seen it and maybe a tentative yes, paying review of your board or, but I'm supposed to respond next week with how many people have signed it, how many people think they're going to sign it and/or if there's questions.
I can't imagine anybody's going to have a problem with it.
Right. Yeah, I imagine most towns want to present it to the board.
I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Not regarding this.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if you, what you talk about salt, but I'm curious, especially in Lake Placid, as you know, we have an issue with the amount of salt that the state distributes on Main Street, which ultimately ends up in Mirror Lake. This is causing a problem for us. And I'm sure that Bill Farabee might say that it has caused a problem in the Cascade Lakes. Has there been any discussion whatsoever about the ratio of sand to salt that the state is utilizing specifically in those two areas, especially Main Street, Lake Placid?
There's been a lot of talk about that. Sand is not something we like to use. We find that that causes more problems than the salt. And it's, we do have reduced salt beaches, Cascade Pass being one of them. We put less salt down there than we do in other areas. And also Wilmington Notch is another reduced salt beach. We're constantly trying to, you know, we don't want to put down any more salt than we have to. We know it hurts the environment and it costs money to put down salt. So we went to treated salt a few years ago. That gave us a means to put down less salt because it's more effective in the cold temperatures. We can certainly try and...
Well, I just know that recent studies on Mirror Lake indicate that the salt is having a negative effect on the fish population there.
You know, we...
Over time now, it keeps, you know, when we have vortex units or whatever, when everything's in place, maybe, you know, that will certainly help. I mean, this is a unique situation where you happen, the state happens to be salting right through the middle of a community that has storm drainage that unfortunately filters directly into that body of water.
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of talks all the time internally and with other outside groups. We go to the conferences, ADK Action and the other groups that have meetings specifically about salt issues.
Yeah. Well, the town and village are changing and going to a different type of salt product.
I think Lake George is addressing this problem right now. There's, I haven't been too involved with it, but they have all sorts of new programs they're trying in the village of Lake George because of the runoff into the lake.
Yeah, I actually live in Lake George, so I'm pretty familiar with what they're doing down there. We are, you know, we are testing out new things. Also this year, we're going to start using brine. We're going to start making brine and putting brine down. We're going to start testing it on bridges and ramps on I-87 as a pre-treatment to, you know, storms. And that will help with the pre-treatment from preventing hard pack and also we'll have, we'll be able to put down less salt once we have the brine in place in advance.
Well, I just hope it stays as a priority. So that's the only point of the message.
And actually, one more thing to let everyone know about, we're getting a tow plow this year. I don't know if you've heard what they are, but it's a plow mounted on a trailer that comes behind the dump truck and it articulates the whole plow, swings out to the side and takes out another lane. And we can plow two lanes at once with the large dump truck and the tow behind tow plow. And there's supposed to be some public service announcements coming out starting this week to make the public aware of how these things work because if you're driving behind it and all of a sudden you see this trailer swinging out to the side, you're going to think it came off the hitch. But it's meant to just, the whole body of the trailer swings out, the wheels turn, the trailer swings out to the side and it occupies the whole lane adjacent to the plow. And that's going to be out up in the Chesterfield area this winter. Once we start plowing, it's going to be on our beat that covers the northern part of 87 up in Chesterfield. So just that you're aware that that's out there. Randy?
I guess just to elaborate, I realize that the salt is not you, it's higher up. I was involved for a year and a half with the ADK Action Group and stuff because I do think salt is killing everything in the studies that have been done by Paul Smith College and whatnot. It's the entire, why not just Mirror Lake, it's the entire watershed that is becoming charged with the salt. The studies are very blatant that it's not dissipating through the summer anymore. Or actually, the levels are staying high anywhere along the highways where that's done. I do know there's a lot of testing and whatnot going on, but it is not just Mirror Lake. It's the entire watershed where this is happening. Sadly, I separated because I had a difference of opinion with the Adirondack Council from that group, but it's still something near and dear to me that we really need to be doing something different with the salt because it is creating a big problem for us. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we do, like I said, we do work constantly to try and improve this situation and we're willing to meet with anyone that has an idea that they want to talk about. We can try reducing salt in the village of Lake Placid and further, but we can talk about that if you'd like.
Mr. Manell?
Yeah. The only way, and I guarantee you, if we're ever going to stop the use of salt or eliminate it, is change the laws that we don't maintain a bare road policy. We started in 1980, I remember, I was a Highway Superintendent that started bare road policy. As long as people can drive 72, 75 miles an hour legally, they want bare roads. And unless it's changed, the speed limits are changed and people are forced to slow down and accept the fact that you're driving in winter weather. I mean, I've seen towns in the Alps, a town as big as Lake Placid, signs on the outside, you must have changed or studded tires, and you go in there, it's white pack. I've got pictures of Route 9 back in the early 50s, the road was white pack. And we all remember driving from here to Elizabeth, or down to Skid Lake with the ice pack. You had lanes to drove in and we drove and we didn't have radials, we didn't have front-wheel drives and there was very few four-wheel drives. But people, the laws have to be changed and they have to accept the fact, otherwise you've got to, no matter what you use, if you want to take the ice off, you've got calcium chloride, you've got salt, you've got brine, it all does the same thing. Helps the ice, lutes the waters. We have storm drains at Skid Lake and same thing, drop it through Route 9, right through the lake.
Yeah, DOT does not have a bare road policy although the public kind of thinks that there is one. You know, we plow the roads as well as we can with the staff that we have, but we certainly don't have a bare road policy. But, you know, the public, they drive fast on the interstates, they have their SUVs, they expect the roads to be, you know, safe and we do the best we can, but we don't have a bare road policy.
They expect, even on county, county roads.
And then down in the Albany area, they're even tougher on, you know, the DOT for maintaining a clear road. And the Adirondacks, they kind of expect there to be some snow on the roads, but...
Back in 78, we used 2,000 yards of sand, very little, most time no salt in it. We used to buy salt in bags. That was how little bit of salt we used. And people lived and fire trucks traveled, school buses traveled, there was no drop-down chains, but people have to be, it's got to be changed.
That's what I was going to say. Mike, we don't have a bare roads policy in the town of Chesterfield either and our meetings are televised and I always tell people to slow down. We do not have a bare roads policy. They have to take their own control of things.
But if they don't see the road black immediately after...
That's their problem, not mine. If they come to a stop sign doing 40 miles an hour and they expect to stop to that sign, they go through it. That's not my problem, that's their problem. Sean?
Thanks. I noticed you talked about pre-treaty bridges and things overpasses with brine. Heard a lot from my constituents the last couple of years, a number of them afraid or concerned about the possibility of fracking brine being brought into New York and being sold or used. So I know that you wouldn't do it, but I would just recommend that, you know, you be ready to tell people what the brine mixture is and where it's coming from because when they start seeing brine going down, you're going to get the phone calls.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get them back to you.
Thanks, Mike.
Chris, come on up.
Morning, Chris. Everybody have Chris's Highway Division report? Any questions for Chris on the highway? Chris, I see you've got a couple of resolutions.
Yes. First one is Ragnow Relay, Resolution Authorizing Ragnow Relay to use Essex County fairgrounds on the roads.
Moved by Mr. Connel, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Mr. Farabee?
Just a comment, Chris. I think here last year when we brought this up after the race, there was a constituent from Lewis here and they were complaining about, you know, garbage and water bottles and things of that nature that were deposited along the sides of the road. So maybe, you know, in this contract that defies that they have to go along afterwards and clean up whatever debris they leave laying around.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Resolution carries. Got another one there, Chris?
Yep. The next one is a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to accept a grant for $270,000 for the nature conservancy.
Somebody want to move that? Mr. Puleydi? Second by Mr. Whitson? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Resolution carries. Do you have anything else on the highway? You've had it on the highway.
That is it. I've got some miscellaneous ones I can do later.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds Division, maintain it something. Anybody have any questions on Buildings and Grounds? Anything to add to that?
I just want to add that the Buildings and Grounds in this area have looked great all summer, flowers growing, everything is in shape, looks great.
Janitors? Anybody have any questions under janitors?
I have something on bridges. Just want to compliment the county and Chris and your men and Jim Hugan for the great job they did on the Dr. Ray Bridge. As you all know, you've heard me say before that that bridge came from the Town of J. It was a FEMA project, the county removed, or it was removed from Town of J, taken to DPW. DPW then modified it to meet what we needed for a pedestrian bridge. It's in, open, and we thank the guys for the work they did on it. It's a good job, thanks.
Good, you're welcome. Okay, Health and Safety Coats? Any questions on that? If you have anything, Chris, just jump in.
Okay.
Public Safety Building? Any questions on the Public Safety Building? Phil's got his report.
How are we making out with the generator ordeal?
Generator ordeal is, we do have, we're moving on it, right now we're waiting for a proposal from the new company that has taken over for Warren Electric. And we haven't got to that point yet because we're in the process of trying to set everything up initially with them. But we should hopefully have something to you by next month.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Engineer? Do you have anything on that?
Nope.
Okay. Miscellaneous? You've got some miscellaneous issues.
Yes, I got some miscellaneous resolutions. The, this is a resolution asking to authorize us to replace a box on one of the tri axles to 1969, or it's A-69. It's a 2003, the box is in fairly rough shape due to loading rocks and a bunch of debris. And the resolution is for $14,930 and I've got three quotes on it.
Somebody want to move that? Mr. Moore, Mr. Manell? Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Manell. Discussion on that? It's in his budget, he's got enough money for it. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Do you have any more?
Yep, the next resolution is asking to replace some wear parts on the existing Vogli paver that we have. It's got roughly 7,800 hours on it and it's with budgeted funds and the wear parts are from anywhere from the plates underneath the chains to chains to sprockets that should have been replaced probably a while back. But for all the wear parts, it's roughly $23,000.
Moved by Mr. Manell, second by Mr. Moore. Discussion on that? You got quotes on that one, too?
Yes.
Okay. And you got the money?
Yes.
No further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carries.
The last one that I have is, I'm working with Dan, the, Chris from the Fish Hatchery is, I sat with him for quite a while the other day and tried to get a list of the things that he may need upcoming for next year. And the one thing that he said he was in desperate need of is a riding lawnmower. I took the existing three quotes that we did, we purchased one earlier this year and they were going to hold the prices and it was for $6,200 coming from budgeted funds in the Fish Hatchery budget.
Moved by Mr. Manell, do you have a second? Mr. Moore, I mean, excuse me, moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Manell. Discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carries.
Question, Chris. Chris, do you know if the personal items in the house have been removed?
Um, I, we did go into the, and took several photos. We're doing a report right now, but no, they have not.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Chris?
The only thing that I did want the board to, is just a note in there that the motor equipment operator, we've listed it twice for applicants and we're having a lot of trouble trying to fill a position. So I'm not sure why, but, and we also have one, another motor equipment operator retiring as of February 29th, so, R-28.
This is the discussion we had somewhat at budget time as it relates to these MEOs. There's only, how many MEOs do you have left down there?
There's five, I think.
Yeah, there may be only five left down there. We looked at it as to, in order to be more competitive in terms of attracting people because that MEO position doesn't pay very much. I think it's only 14 an hour.
14 an hour.
The discussion was that we may want to consider moving them all to HEOs. MEOs traditionally are the first step and then you go from MEO and as you get your license, you go to an HEO position. But we may want to look at converting those to HEO positions, which are easier to attract applicants for. I think when we looked at it, it would be a cost of somewhere around $20,000 or $23,000 to do it. But again, we may have that discussion again in January. We can't do it now, we can't amend this, we can't amend the upcoming budget now anyways until January, so that's a discussion for next year, but that's what we have been...
Chris, do you think it's a pay issue while you're not getting any qualified applicants?
I think it's a pay issue.
That and the labor shrinkage or the labor pool?
We talked about it, Chris and myself, and we think that's what it is.
Apparently right now in the United States, they're 250,000 commercial drivers short and that seems to be a trend that's increasing every year. And to attract qualified candidates for that position, we may have to address their compensation.
The position I'm feeling right now, we lost a very, very good employee, went to another job for $2 an hour more, so.
Anything else? Does anybody have anything for Chris? Oh, Mr. Har...
We're aware that the truck that transports the fish is in need of repairs. Is that on your schedule?
That is on our schedule. It's in the shop right now and we're getting a list of parts that we would need to fix it and/or if it has to go further. But at this point, I think we can fix it.
Also, we've hired a firm to take inventory on asbestos and other dangerous materials that are in destructions there. How is that proceeding?
That's a, can Jim come up on that one?
What up, Jim?
Other than that, you know, Atlantic Testing is on site today. They expect it to be there today and tomorrow. And then hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll get their report. The other thing, the D E C permit we've been working on as well, and the fish healthy inspection report should be back, as well as the certificate, should be back by the end of this week.
Also, what is the agreement that we have with D E C that allows them to utilize the surplus fish?
Haven't seen it yet, Charlie. I have not seen that agreement yet. I've been looking for that after your last request. I haven't seen that. I don't know how that has occurred, so.
They are making demands upon us in regards to infrastructure at the Fish Hatchery and I think there could be some trade-offs there.
Yeah, D E C's Division of Water Quality is who Charlie's talking about and that's regarding our speedies permit. I did finally get some new correspondence from D E C just this past week on updates on that speedies permit violation and I, as soon as I get my head around it, I intend to meet with the Subcommittee on the Fish Hatchery and give you an update on those. I am looking for that other agreement. Haven't found it yet.
Anything else? For Jim, who's up there, for the Fish Hatchery, anything? If not, thank you, Jim, for coming up. Chris, do you have anything else?
Nope, not at this time.
Anybody else have any questions for Chris? If not, thank you, Chris. John O'Neill, come on right up. John's got a resolution request. You want to come back up, of course?
My pleasure, morning. All right, so it's, in all these years, I don't think I've ever come at the last, at the end of the year to ask for a major expenditure. But we have some information that came to me just last week and so I am asking for resolution to, for Social Services to expend from $20,000, 15 funds, a maximum of $19,500 for security upgrades. And I'd be happy to explain before or after if it's a resolution I can explain before or after the second. What do you want?
Somebody want to move that for discussion? Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Cannon. For discussion now, explainer?
Okay. We had, we asked DPW to come over for an estimate on, excuse me, very inexpensive construction to raise the platform for a security officer over there. But while they were there, and Chris is here because he was actually on that tour and from that, they observed that our security cameras are very rudimentary and cheap. They were something that actually was copped together from some deal our former IT guy got on Amazon, I guess, and we hadn't had anything, so we were grateful to have something. But they're very limited in scope. So one thing led to another and Security Concepts was with them, with the group that was doing the tour. And they submitted a bid that I think, last week, that I think covers upgrading to about 19 cameras and that's for 19. And there, if they did, it'd be $28,000, but if Buildings and Grounds does the wiring, it's $19,500. Because this has happened so fast, I don't think we need 19, anywhere near this. This also covers some of the outside area, outside the building and the parking lot where we've had some security issues. So I think it'll be much less than that, but that's the best information I have right now at this time.
Any questions?
Do they record for, for our recording or just so you can watch people on the monitor?
It's probably, I would think it might be a one terabyte, which probably would record for a couple of months and then record over. It was a continuous record. Record for a couple of months and then they just start recording over the top of what was there.
And it depends how much motion you have because with most security recorders, it only records when there's motion. So if you have a lot of motion, your recorder's not going to last as long for as many days of recording, keeping it and storing it as you would if you only had motion once in a while or in the daytime, nothing at night or something like that, it'll go longer. So it depends what motion you have to...
Is this money going to come out of contingency?
No.
No?
No, it comes from savings, from money we didn't have to spend this year on security renovations. We budget every year in case there's a, we've had in the past, a lightning strike and it blows out the computers over there and it's very expensive as security concepts.
So this is coming out of your budget?
Yes.
Budgeted fund, and this isn't to keep Jerry out, is it?
Well, I was going to, I think it's a good idea because I've heard there's people that got in there that aren't supposed to be in there, you know? Thanks, Randy, for saying that. You took my thunder away from me.
Anybody else have anything else? Yes?
Have you ever considered equipping vehicles with GPSs?
Yeah, we've looked at that a number of times.
Actually, we have a, me and Jim have set up a meeting tentatively for... Actually, we have a, me and Jim have set up a meeting tentatively for January with a company that, that will do that.
Then would we go to bid? Because I'm interested in that. Start with two of them in town, but I could see John's department, I could see the Health Department, yeah, they're in outline areas a lot of times. Could have them on the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, we did look at that. Some of the funding we actually could get through the Transportation Department as well for the buses and some of those things. So, yeah, that's something we've been looking at. So we may come to you next year with that.
Anybody else have any-
Jerry, all kidding aside, in this day and age, I, I would totally support that. I think it's something that's a necessity, absolutely.
Good. Okay. Anything else? All in favor? Opposed? Carries.
So the resolution, just to clarify, the resolution is up to 19,500?
Yes.
For security upgrades.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Chris. Next on the agenda, Soil and Water. David Reckon couldn't be here today. I can't remember what he told me, but he had something going on today that he couldn't be here. But if there's any questions on the report, just let me or Dave Blades know. Maybe we can answer them if anybody has any questions. Because we're both on the Soil and Water Board. Talking about Soil and Water Board, as you can see on your agenda, we need one resolution. Resolution authorizing the appointment of David Blades as a member of the Soil and Water Board for a three-year term beginning 1/116 through 12/3118. He thought he was going to get off the board, but he's not getting off that easy. Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Minnell? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Congratulations, David. You're still on. Anybody have anything else for Department of Public Works? If not, does anybody have any questions about the invoice you have in front of you, the $23,406.97? That's what David Reckon had sent to the county and we, we don't need a motion on it because it's already part of our contract to Soil and Water.
I want to ask one.
Yeah?
I want to go back. Or John Williams?
Okay. Run away, John.
That 19,500, that, do we, you only got one bid, is, is this- Well, we have Security Concepts on contract. We already bid for Security Services, so Security Concepts is already on contract with us. So anything, because we have security systems all over that have to be maintained and kept track of. So that contract is in- That's why I know, you have a contract. Yeah. And they're, those prices are defined right down to the hourly rates and what they can charge on a markup.
Okay. Mr. Minnell?
Yeah, I have one more feeling on that. I'm sure that this company's been giving us their best advice, but before we make a purchase like this and have to repurchase it in eight years or six years because it doesn't do the job, should, should we reach out to other counties and see what they're using in their departments, possibly see, you know, what they would, what they, what they would recommend?
Well, again, we're somewhat limited in what we, we're actually will do with these security cameras. They have to tie into the existing system that we already have. The existing system actually is located in the Public Safety Building in Lewis. All the cameras tie into that. It's on a fiber link between here and there. The recordings are kept down there. If we want to view those recordings, we just simply go online, go through the fiber connection and connect down there. That was a fairly extensive security system that was put in down there and so we're really just tying back into that system.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else before I adjourn? Yes?
Would it be possible, Dad, to get RFPs for GPSs for vehicles?
We could-
I mean, I, I know Wells Communication have them and probably several other do, but-
Okay, I can, I can put that down.
Okay. If not, stand adjourned. Thank you.